Hey, good evening, everybody. I want to welcome everybody to the February 18th, 2019, meeting of the Jersey Village City Council. Madam Secretary, quorum is present.
Yes.
Fantastic. So we'll move into item B this evening, invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge and prayer, pulpit minister, John Gooch, Jersey Village Church of Christ. Pastor?
Let's pray. Almighty God, in heaven, we come before you and praise your holy and righteous and gracious and loving name. And we thank you, Father, for every blessing that you give us through your son, Jesus. Father, we pray that you would bless this meeting tonight, that you would bless the leadership of this community and every citizen who lives here. Father, we pray for the wisdom and for the guidance of the leadership and for peace for all who live in this community. We are especially mindful of the first responders, and we pray that you will protect them and keep them from all harm. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to meet peaceably in a free society, a free country, a free city, and we thank you, Father, that we have this time, that we can come together and solve the problems of our community. Pray that you continue to bless this community, and we ask these things in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Pastor. We'll move into item C this evening, presentations. Presentation of Employee of the Month, City Manager, Austin Bleese.
Mayor and councilors, thank you. Tonight, I'm pleased to announce that Jose De La Garza is our February 20th, 2019 Employee of the Month. Jose is responsible for all of our city vehicles throughout the city. He provides all of the maintenance for the fire apparatus, police vehicles and ambulances, and all other vehicles that are essential pieces of equipment for the city. If these apparatus are not ready to run on emergency calls, then the citizens of our city and the citizens that pass through could potentially be at risk. Jose is organized, dedicated, and extremely knowledgeable in his job. Not a day goes by that he does not get a call for something with one of the fleet vehicles. He always has the answer to them or makes his way to wherever necessary to remedy the problem. He recently accompanied members of the fire department on a trip to inspect the newest rescue truck at the manufacturer, and his knowledge in that trip was invaluable. His insight on the mechanics of the vehicle was critical to the great inspection process. In the end, the city is going to benefit greatly from his knowledge and enthusiasm for being a part of the group that inspected this truck. Jose, thank you for all you do for Jersey Village.
Thanks for everything that you do for the city. So that moves us right into citizen comments. Citizens who have signed the card and wish to speak to the City Council be heard at this time and comply to the Tax Open Meetings Act unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda. The city staff and city council members are prevented from discussing the subject and may respond only with statements of factual information or existing policy. Citizens are limited to five minutes for their comments to council. Deborah Finley.
Good evening, everybody, and congratulations on your announcement today. As some of you may be aware, the construction has started on the property that's between the CVS Pharmacy and the Lakes of Jersey Village subdivision, and everything was going great. Everything's fine. We knew it was coming, and as we sat on our patios on Thursday morning enjoying our coffee, chainsaws cranked up and trees started falling right at our fence level, the subdivision fence level where our property line is located. And these trees are located on a 15-foot landscape buffer easement, and we're not supposed to be going anywhere with this construction. Needless to say, several of the residents were in shock, went over to the site to ask them to please stop chopping down the trees. The excavation had gone in and has damaged multiple larger trees, roots that we know will not make it. They will die. So my husband came up to the city. Y'all were on the flurry of emails. My husband went up to the city, got ahold of Austin. Austin got Christian to come over and meet. Apparently, someone called the owner because she showed up with some kind of representative. And at that point, we were informed that she has a new survey plat that shows her property goes two feet into all of our lots and that that wall sits on her property. Now, we have filed an application for appeal and provided over, right at 20 years of multiple survey plats certified that show that fence is on our property line, and that is our property line. I do not know what she has as a survey, and I don't know who prepared it or where the issue is. Is it markers? Was it a line shot wrong? But if that wall was two feet into all of our properties, that would impact 16 homes, and we all have a cloud on our title. We would not be able to sell our homes without disclosing that. We've been paying taxes on property that's not ours for years. So you see what the magnitude of the issue would be. What concerns me is that the city did not see that as a red flag. Stop everything. Let's get this resolved. This can't be. This subdivision's been here for years. So where's the problem? Is the wall really surveyed in the wrong place and we're real, the wall and two feet of our property is, we're really trespassing on someone else's land as to the 16 lots that back up? Or is the new survey off for some reason? Instead, the city went, okay, you can move two feet closer to the wall because you own that two feet. That decision is insane. The residents are sorely disappointed, discouraged, concerned that that immediately was not run up a flagpole to the city legal department or the residents were advised, we've just been informed you're trespassing and that y'all all have cloud on your title. You don't own what you thought you owned and that this wall owned by the Lakes of Jersey Village is sitting on somebody else's property. So today, we filed the application, paid the $300 fee, provided four separate, over a 19-year period, survey, certified survey plats to the city showing that we own it, the wall is where it's supposed to be. But the damage is done. The two feet that should not have been excavated was excavated, and those trees were cut down that sat on those two feet for absolutely no reason. I'm appalled at how this was handled. What is the city's procedures and processes for when something like this is raised at a construction site? This needs to be reviewed. It's too late for us to get our trees back. We have a resident who sat on her patio and drank coffee at nine o'clock that morning and couldn't see one square inch of the CVS Pharmacy building. She now looks at that whole entire building because they wiped out most of the trees behind her, behind her fence or the fence. So I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention. Y'all saw the emails. I know they were confusing. Y'all probably after about the second one went, oh, that one was out of her mind and I'm not reading that. But this has been very stressful for the residents. We have talked to lawyers. We have talked to realtors. We have talked to surveyors, and we have talked to our home builder. So I would appreciate the city looking at their processes and stop that construction until this gets resolved, and we want trees back. We want big trees back.
Thank you, Deborah.
Thank you very much for your time.
Bill Schuster.
My name's Bill Schuster. I live at 8 Peachtree Court in Lakes of Jersey Village. This problem does not affect me, but I am the president of the Homeowners Association. So I'm, this affects the Homeowners Association. If that fence is in the wrong place, that it affects up to 16 homes. And also, if it's, this property's been sold multiple times over the years, and nobody has noticed this in all the different surveys that have been done, something is not right here, and somebody needs to take, you know, look into it. There is no way we should find out that theoretically, the Homeowners Association doesn't own the fence that's been there for nearly 20 years because somebody comes up with a fifth survey that says it's in the wrong place. So I think that the city should have immediately, when there's contradictory surveys, something should have been done and stopped at that time before all these trees were taken down and the green area, a buffer area was removed. So I appreciate y'all looking into it and see what we can come up with. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Marilyn Schuster.
Hello. I'm Marilyn Schuster. I live at 8 Peachtree Court, and I'm going to spare you here in the same song, just a different verse. But I do want to say that it concerns us that there was a discrepancy, and I think common sense would have said, wait a minute, who's right here? I mean, we may be wrong, and that's even scarier than the fact that we might be right because to be wrong is going to be a mess to correct it on a lot of different homeowners' properties. But it just concerns us that there was not an immediate red flag put up. Someone went back to the table. Homeowners were notified. The HOA was notified. Someone sat down. There seems like there was someone that made an executive decision with brass thimble to say, okay, so you feel like you've been short at two feet of property? How do you want to resolve that? Well, I'll just move closer to the fence line, and we'll call it even. We're done. I don't mind building a little closer. That's not good enough. What happens in a few years when she might decide to sell that property, and the next owner might say, wait a minute, I want that two feet back? I guess we're looking at, is she right? Are we right? But the construction needs to stop at this point. She has not poured concrete. She should not be allowed to pour concrete because if she pours and she's in violation, there will be a process to make her cut back that foundation and redo it should we be proven right. I just ask you to please listen. Once before, one of our councilmen, sitting on the board right now, posted something on Facebook to the effect that Lakes of Jersey Village residents are just a bunch of old retired people who don't know one end from the other. And we're wondering if this is another case of someone figuring those old retired people are not even going to catch on. We can do exactly what we want, and that's very disappointing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor. Mary Lee Beasley.
Good evening. I'm Mary Lee Beasley. I live at 14901 Lakeview Drive. I have a couple of concerns. One of them is about maybe looking at putting a ramp in the area of the shopping area around that strip that's like around Adriatic Cafe because I've noticed two families that had family members in wheelchairs, and in order for them to get in and out of the restaurant, they have to either get people to lift up the wheelchair, several people, and bring the wheelchair up over the curb or go way down to specs. Okay, so anyway, I'm just, I don't even know quite who I address that comment to. Usually, I come up here with many things to say, and tonight, I didn't have that many things that I wanted to share. I am now very concerned about hearing about this situation with the Lakes of Jersey Village because I, for the last several months, have felt like I have not been listened to for all of the things that I have brought to your attention over bringing up the loss of the money at the Jersey Meadow Golf Course and all the other things where it didn't seem like you guys really cared, and I did a lot of research. So I'm very sad to hear that it's like you guys really don't care about the citizens, and I think you think we're all asleep, and we're not. Anyway, that was, that, I mean, I didn't even know about this situation. Now, one of my other concerns has to do with Councilman Bobby Warren. In my opinion, Councilman Bobby Warren, by his comments that are related to James Singleton talking to Barbie Freeman when he went into the election poll and blamed me for that situation, to me, what I see and what I believe is that Councilman Warren is promoting, it's an election law that James Singleton was not allowed to be in there. I don't care if he was informing Barbie Freeman about the fact that my friend and I were sitting on a picnic table that we weren't even thinking about. I don't think that's appropriate. And you are an attorney, so to me, what you're doing is you're condoning the breaking of the election law, and I do not think that's okay. Anyway, thank you for listening.
All right. I have no more citizen comments this evening. We'll move directly into the City Manager's report. City Manager, Austin Bleese.
Mayor and councilors, the report is before you this evening, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Any questions for Austin? Seeing none, moving to consent agenda. Does anybody wish to take an item from the consent agenda and place it into the regular agenda? Seeing none, looking for motion on the consent agenda?
So move.
I'll second.
There's been a motion, seconds or any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, and the abstentions, motion carries. Moves into the regular session. Item one, Consider Resolution Number 2019-08, approving the fiscal year 2018 annual report for tax increment reinvestment zone number two. Austin Bleese, City Manager.
Mayor and councilors, the Tax Increment Financing Act requires all cities and counties that designate a tax increment reinvestment zone to file an annual report with the comptroller's office and the chief executive officer of each taxing unit that levies property taxes on the property in the zone. Report must include a number of things, including the amount and source of revenue in there, the amount and purpose of expenditures, any bonds that were issued, and the captured appraised value shared by the county, city, or other taxing units. So for this year, as we have the TERS district, we are required to submit a report. For this year, the TERS district actually saw a decrease in valuation from last year as nine out of the 27 parcels currently within the TERS districts that are taxed by the city saw a decrease in valuation. As such, the city saw no revenue to the TERS fund. The city also did not spend any money out of the TERS fund. And that's a quick summary of the report. The TERS Board met on January 21st, 2019, reviewed the report. They are recommending the City Council approve it. So the recommended action for that would be to approve the resolution approving the fiscal year 2018 annual report for the tax increment reinvestment zone number two.
All right. Any questions on the resolution? All right. Looking for a motion?
I'll move. We approve Resolution 2019-08.
Second.
There's been a motion, seconds or any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, and the abstentions, motion carries. Item two, Consider Ordinance Number 2019-03, amending Chapter 30, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 4, Fire Prevention Code. Now, the Code of Ordinances of the City of Jersey Village, Texas, by amending Section 30-111 to adopt the 2018 International Fire Code, adding a new Section 30-112, providing local amendments to the Fire Code and amending Section 30-113. Definition, providing severability clause, providing for appeal, providing for notice and penalty, and providing an effective date. Chief, Mark Bits.
Mayor and council, before you is an ordinance to adopt the Chapter 30, Fire Prevention and Protection Code, Article 4 of the City of Jersey Village Code of Ordinances. The Building Board of Adjustment and Appeals is charged with the responsibility for making recommendations. We met on February 6, 2019, to look over the Fire Prevention Code and the amendments. The Building Board of Adjustment and Appeals has presented written recommendations which you've approved in the consent agenda. So we're looking for you to approve Ordinance Number 2019-03, amending Chapter 30, Fire Prevention and Protection Code, Article 4 of the Fire Prevention Code.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions on the ordinance?
Actually, Chief, one thing, and this is not a change from the existing Code of Ordinances, but it is something that while we're opening this up and looking at it, I wanted to make sure that I understood. There's a statement in here that's added that goes beyond the Fire Code that says, in general, open burning, recreational fires, bonfire prescribed burns, and portable outdoor fireplaces and fire pits are not permitted within the incorporated limits of the City of Jersey Village. The last two are the ones that probably draw the most attention because I would imagine there's probably a large number of households in this city that don't follow that code. I didn't even know it existed until looking at this proposal. What exact, how are we enforcing that, and what does the code, as amended, consider to be portable outdoor fireplaces and fire pits?
Yes, Councilman. In general, outdoor burning is not permitted, and that goes for fire pits and open burning on the ground and things like that. With permit, they can do that. Now, that's mostly business. The International Fire Code covers business occupancies with minimal residential. So for people who have gone to Lowe's and bought a fire pit or have a pit in their backyard, it's not enforceable unless it gets out of hand.
Okay. That's what I wanted to be sure about. Okay.
It's the International Residential Code that governs single-family and duplexes.
Thank you. That's what I was looking for.
And Chief, that's not unique to our city, correct? That falls in line. That's the exact same as the state of Texas requirements, right?
That's correct.
Any other questions? All right. Looking for motion on the ordinance?
I make a motion to approve Ordinance 2019-03. Second.
There's been a motion, seconds or any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, and the abstentions, motion carries. Item three, Consider Ordinance Number 2019-04, amending Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Jersey Village, Texas, opting the 2018 addition of the International Building Code, Residential Code, Plumbing Code, Fuel Gas Mode, Mechanical Code, Energy Conservation Code, Swimming Pool and Spa Code, and adapting the National Electric Code 2017 addition, providing for local amendments to the various codes, providing for severability, providing for appeal, and providing notice and a penalty as provided by Section 1-8 of the Code. Christian Summers, building official.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, on February 6, 2019, we met to discuss updating the governing international codes, International Building Code, International Mechanical Code, International Fire Code, which we already handled, International Fuel Gas Code, International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, International Energy Conservation Code, and the 2017 National Electrical Code, NFPA 70. The review is necessary in order to prevent the city from having its pending building code effectiveness grading schedule reassessed at a number greater than five on a 10-point scale. If you're above five, you cannot be, that's a prerequisite to be five or below to participate in CRS. Any questions?
Yeah, any questions? Go ahead.
Christian, I read through all those amendments. I didn't see any, but I'm not the expert. There's nothing that is really unique to Jersey Village. Most of what I read in there was very similar to what other cities are doing. Is there anything you feel you need to bring attention to that would be super unique for us?
I can't think of anything that's super unique. No, sir. I would prefer that the state adopt a state code and some local amendments typically related to floodplain be adopted by various municipalities, but that's not the way it is. I think that would be easier for code officials as well as builders.
Any other questions? All right. Looking for motion on the ordinance?
Move to approve Ordinance Number 2019-04.
Second.
There's been a motion, seconds or any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, and the abstentions, motion carries. Consider Ordinance Number 2019-05, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Jersey Village, Texas, to re-designate flood hazard areas based upon revised flood insurance studies and flood insurance maps. Adopting FIS and firm, making other findings and provisions related thereto, including administration permitting and variance procedures, providing for publications, and a penalty for violation of any of the provisions of the ordinance. Christian Summers, building official.
Thank you. These are the last changes that we need to make for participation in CRS. This is based on a recommended template, a model template provided us by FEMA.
And so these changes are mandated in order to actually participate in the FEMA flood insurance program, correct?
To participate in CRS.
Any questions for Christian? Yep. Seeing none, looking for a motion?
Move that we approve Ordinance 2019-05.
Second.
There's been a motion, seconds or any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, and the abstentions, motion carries.
Happy birthday.
All right. Consider Resolution Number 2019-09, approving the golf course clubhouse convention center design as developed by PGA L. Jason Offar, Director of Parks and Recreation. Jason?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On May 14th, 2018, City Council approved Resolution 2018-30, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with PGA L for the design of a New Jersey Meadow Golf Course Clubhouse and Convention Center. Since that time, staff has met multiple times with the architect and presented options to council in two separate workshops. On January 28th, 2019, a second workshop was scheduled with staff, city council, and PGA L to review the new changes and site plan. During the January workshop, council made recommendations to the facility that have now been implemented into the design and include the following: keeping the current traffic flow through the parking lot the same, and looking into having employee parking in another location; making sure the building was elevated higher than 18 inches from the current ground level; looking to having windows along the west end of the conference room; switching the boardroom and storage room locations on the second floor; allowing access to the patio from the boardroom. There was also a concern with the dry good area in the kitchen, and PGA L was going to review that concern with their food and beverage consultant. And finally, there was a concern with the drive-up window in the stairwell with a possible switchback, looking into that. Those were the recommendations that were made in the January workshop and have been implemented. Our recommended action is, staff recommends that council approve Resolution 2019, approving the layout design of the new clubhouse and convention center and substantially the form presented.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions for Jason or staff?
Jason, the pictures that we've been presented don't reflect those changes. Is that just because they haven't been updated?
Yes, sir.
But I mean, you're sharing us those changes are taking place.
Yes, sir.
There were some recommendations from the Golf Course Advisory Committee. Were those incorporated into the plan? I know some of those were kind of more, more, you know, the media and things like that are probably after the floor plan, but what consideration did you guys give to those recommendations?
Yes, sir. So we sent that information to PGA L, and they've incorporated some of those minor changes into the plan as well. I mean, the biggest thing I think that you'll see are the windows in the conference room. I think that was one of the largest concerns that the Golf Course Committee had. And they were working on a semi-tight time crunch, if you will, to try to get some of this information to us. So again, if not all of that is in there, PGA L has assured us that it will be.
Are the dollars still the same?
Yes, sir.
I do think it was worth sending it to the Golf Course Committee. I thought their feedback was really good. There's some things I hadn't thought of. A lot of it was fairly late in the process, superficial-type things, but it was important stuff.
Any other questions for Jason or staff? So just a quick two cents. I really like how this turned out. I know we've gone through several iterations. We've had probably at least two, maybe three workshops in which council has put their take on it as well. I'm glad to see that the Golf Course Advisory Committee was able to review it as well. I know you guys have worked very hard with PGA L to develop something that I think is going to fit the needs of our community. Total square footage, what did that end up being, Jason?
I don't want to lie to you, sir. It was a little over 10,000 or 11,000.
Did we say like 10, 10.5, 10 and 1/2 that we ended up at? 11.5.
11.5. Terrence with PGA L is here, so he's spouting off all the right stuff to me.
Okay. Yeah, so we ended up with what seems to be a very nice, modern, 11,500-square-foot building, two stories, in which we've got conference space on the top. What was the final, what was the seating number we had on there, the capacity on the conference center? Up to?
It was over 300.
Over 300, okay.
The entire upper floor area.
And I really like the fact that we have a space that large because once this is completed, we're not going to have a convention space similar to this in this general area. So I think there will be a lot of attention, a lot of opportunity for the city to host a lot of events in the city. So I guess where I'm going with that is I like the rendering. I like what was designed. So, I guess where I'm going with that is I like the rendering, I like what was designed. I think it fits the intention of what we set out to accomplish a year or so ago now, two years now. I mean, we went and we, city council went and had a retreat, we had lunch over there, sat and looked at the golf course and imagined what we could do for this community, what we could do for the golf course with a building like this. And I feel as if you guys have done a very good job of capturing that vision, and I like what I see. So, those are my comments this evening.
Yeah, I will say on the Golf Course Committee, they were very enthusiastic about the design. The feedback was overall positive. They voted unanimously to register their approval of this. And with all of the citizens I've spoken with and showed them the design, they've, I mean, it's been near-universal approval. So, I think this has been a great process. It's been a lengthy process, but I think we've arrived at a design that people love, that is going to be very effective for what we're trying to achieve.
And to that point, if the resolution passes this evening, if it's not already on the website, I would certainly recommend we get the renderings on the website as soon as possible, so we can demonstrate and show to the community what we're going to be building out there.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments or questions? Fantastic work, everybody. I'm very excited. Looking for a motion on Resolution 2019-09.
I move we approve Resolution number 2019-09.
Second.
There's been a motion, seconds or additional discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. Item 6, ordinance 2019-06, amending the Jersey Village Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Article 4, Division 2, Section 2-142, to amend the schedule of fees related to miscellaneous services, and to add a new subsection K concerning park user fees. Jason Offaro, Director of Parks and Recreation.
So, over the past year, staff has been able to review pricing for facilities throughout the parks and the recreation industry. We've also had time to research and review partnerships and facility use agreements between the city and outside organizations. Most recently, the department was able to gather information from a public survey and some of the needs of the community, basically more availability for classes and lessons at the city pool. So, this year, our Recreation and Events Coordinator, who oversees the day-to-day operations of the pool, he'll actually be able to certify our lifeguards as water safety instructors. What this will do is allow our citizen, our city lifeguards, the opportunity to conduct swim lessons in our pool and provide easier access for our patrons. We are formalizing our agreements with organizations that utilize the pool and requiring them to submit paperwork and/or fees. We have also reviewed our cash handling procedures and rental policy for the private-party rentals at the pool. And with these proposed changes to the rate, it would also allow the citizens to make one payment versus two payments that they have made historically. Staff researched the surrounding municipalities that operate the pools, and we are in line with our competition for user fees. We've also reached out to nonprofit organizations like the YMCA and have found that we're still priced competitively. Our goal with any recreation programs to meet or exceed a 50% cost recovery, and this amendment will allow us to potentially reach our cost recovery goal. Recommended act, staff recommends that council approve ordinance as presented.
Okay, any questions for Jason or staff?
Jason, let's go back to that comment with the proposed changes to the rate. It would allow the citizen to make one payment versus two payments. What two payments?
So, historically, what has happened is the citizens or patrons would come and rent the pool from the city more than, more than not, or the pool, the pool staff, from the pool staff itself on the pool, at the pool site. When they had the rental, they would then have to pay the lifeguard separately. What we're trying to do is basically take all of that away and just have a one-payment, one-stop shop. They come here, they make a one-time payment, and they have a reservation of two hours plus the lifeguards that need to be there on-site.
Okay, I'd like to hear kind of the reasoning behind this, because the way I'm seeing it, this is going to increase costs to the city. As it stands right now, it appears that the lifeguards are basically independent contractors. And if you're taking them on payroll, then basically you're going to be paying payroll taxes. I don't know where we stand on medical insurance for them, but this is, I mean, a lot of companies are going to independent contractors as opposed to regular employees, and we're going the opposite direction. So, that's the question basically that I have. The lifeguards probably aren't going to be too happy about it either, because they're going to be paying their share of the payroll taxes.
The lifeguards are not contract employees. They are like part-times, and they get taxes deducted from their paycheck.
Having trouble hearing you.
The lifetimes, the lifeguards are part-time employees, and they get taxes deducted from their paycheck.
Right, but they don't pay payroll taxes on the money that they're getting for the activities of these groups. They're getting paid, the two payments, the second payment going to the lifeguards, they're not paying payroll taxes on that, I don't believe.
Right, and this really came about because of the swim lessons. So, currently, we don't even offer any swim lessons to our residents. They have to go outside of the city to be able to get swim lessons. We basically let them use the pool for the swim lessons. And so, what this would do was just bring everything in-house, so the citizens or the patrons would be able to come to the city and pay for a six-week class, and it would be the swim lessons that they would normally have gotten outside.
Yeah, I understand that, but like I said, it's increasing the cost to the city.
But the city's also increasing the revenue by a substantial amount, and these lifeguards are already on our payroll for the regular lifeguarding day that they're here.
And they can't, so if they're being paid by a private party, they still have to report that, they still have to pay taxes on that, they're still having to pay, and they're actually paying not only our portion of the social security and Medicare, they haven't paid all of it, where if it goes to the city, the city's actually paying for our portion of that Medicare, social security. So, if I had the choice of being an employee or a contractor, I would definitely be an employee. I did extensive math on that today for another situation in my private life. I looked at this very extensively, including the discount that residents are getting, because we're doubling from $50 as a family to $100 as a family. But if you do the math, originally, it's written $50, you're limited to four people, and then you have to start paying for more. At 100 bucks, you're unlimited, so it doesn't matter the size of your family, and you're still getting 75% off the fees for the pool. This makes sense to me.
We also tried to keep it as structured as we could with the resident versus non-resident rate and making it semi-across-the-board being double.
One question I do have about, it seems a little odd here that there's an individual season pass for resident rate, $40 per person. The water aerobic season pass for a resident is $50. Is there a reason why there's a $10 increase on the water aerobics pass versus the individual season pass?
No, that was just for aerobics only. One thing, the way it is currently, it's $25 for the entire season, whether you're resident or non-resident. So, we felt that bringing that up, you know, to $50 was, would be able to work well for us. I mean, we're, I mean, there are roughly, you know, 50-plus classes that they have throughout the summer.
But why the premium over the resident season pass? It seems like those should at least be equal, if not the water aerobics less, because the water aerobics is limited access just to when there are classes, whereas the individual season pass is throughout the entire season.
Yeah, I would have to look at that. Let me just...
So, Bobby, you're pointing out that an individual season pass as a resident's $40, and a water aerobic season pass only is $50, so it's $10 more.
Correct.
So, as an individual with a season pass, are you able to go to the water aerobics?
Yes, that's something that we would, that we're definitely trying to work out right now. That's, we haven't really had anything to work with before. It was just an individual pass, and it was pay, pay the city as you come in. We haven't had anything to work with before. So, that's something that our Recreation and Events Coordinator and I are looking at, trying to see how we can manipulate that to where we have those types of opportunities.
Yeah, I would think you would want the water aerobics pass to be significantly less expensive.
If you're still working out water aerobics, should we just pull that from tonight and prove the rest?
Well, before we get to that direction we want to go, I have something I want to review as well. The proposed item K, park user fees, park and recreation facilities, Director of Parks and Recreation with the approval of the city manager, shall establish fees and charges for the use of parks, civilian civic center, and related parks and recreation facilities. My initial thought is that's something that should be handled by council. We have all of these fees for the pool that council is approving. I don't see any reason why we should distinguish between fees and something that council shouldn't vote on as far as fees. Can you give me some justice, some rationale behind that?
Our thoughts were there are a lot of different partnership opportunities that come about in the parks and rec industry, such as our fitness classes that we have in the parks. All of those offer a wide range of different opportunities. So, with that, those different opportunities could be different price ranges. We also, in past municipalities, we've had, you know, circuses that come and utilize the park. And so, if we don't have anything in an ordinance that speaks specifically to that, then typically the Parks and Rec Director has to go back to the city manager, and we bring this all about to you again. Or we have this park user fee in here, definition that says city manager and the parks director can figure out what fee is appropriate.
You know, again, you know, my thought on this is I think that's typically something that should be handled by council, the imposition of fees. If the elected representatives do it, then the people can go yell at their elected representatives for initiating fees and things like that. And I think that a lot of our elected representatives have some good insight as to what might be a good fee, what fees may suit the neighborhood. I would recommend that fees, the addition of fees, the adjustment of fees, you know, staff propose that with council approval. That'd be my recommendation. I want to see, get anybody else's thoughts on councils, if that's a justifiable course of action.
I agree. I think if we're talking about a fee, I mean, call it what you want, fee, tax, whatever, it's for a service in particular, but I think that ought to be left up to us.
I agree, and I think there needs to be some type of schedule for those fees, rather than arbitrarily decided by city manager. That way, somebody knows exactly what the fee will be versus, "I'll get back with you."
I feel like there's accountability in that. And not so much for y'all, but there's, you can explain why this one was cheaper in discount. Those conversations can happen very publicly if we're going to be adjusting that.
So, when I'm looking at the proposed ordinance this evening, and Jason, if I'm hearing you correctly, you guys, are you saying you need to reevaluate the water aerobics pass as compared to just the pool pass? Is that something you think you guys are looking to reevaluate?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I think there's definitely some concern with the addition of section K. What I'm going to recommend is that we table this ordinance and allow for some amendments to be taken up at next city council with some of the feedback and comments from council. What, do you guys agree with that course of action? Okay.
I do have one other question, kind of circling back to Gary's line of questioning. Previously, when a lifeguard worked a private event or a private rental, and the rental paid them directly, was the city involved in that transaction at all?
No.
Or was that, no? Did the city pay the lifeguard at all, or was strictly from?
Strictly from the patron.
So, under the new scenario, would a lifeguard be paid the same rate or a different rate? Because obviously, they were paid a different rate if it were a direct payment, I assume.
Yeah, no, it would be the same. It would be the same rate that they're being paid hourly under the city.
Is that what historically it's been as well?
To my knowledge, yes, sir.
Okay, I'd probably check on that and see. My other question is, these are part-time employees. Part-time being under 40 a week or less than 1,000 a year?
Under 40 a week. For the lifeguards, it's under 40 a week.
Is that, is that consistent? So, is there at any point in time where they go from part-time to full-time?
No.
Based on the number of hours they work? No? Okay.
They're still going to be considered part-time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, based on some of the questions and concerns we've had and some of the staff direction that I've heard, let's go, I'm going to recommend we, for a motion to table ordinance 2019-06 to the March meeting.
I move to table ordinance number 2019-06 until the March meeting.
Second.
There's been a motion, second, is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. That'll actually bring us to Mayor and Council comments this evening. Councilman Wobenhorst.
Seeing as I'm not prepared for any comments, I don't have any comments.
Would you like to defer to somebody else and come back around to you?
That's all right. I don't have any.
I don't have a whole lot of comment other than every resident is important, every resident has a voice, and I don't think low of anybody. And thank you for bringing up your comments today.
Likewise, and Austin, congrats on the new baby girl.
I have none.
You sort of stole my thunder a little bit. I thought I was going to get all the way through, but I did want to welcome Jersey Village's newest resident, Margaret Ann Bleece, who came into this world on Saturday at 7 pounds, 12 ounces. Congratulations to Austin and Beth. I'm sure you're thrilled, and we are very happy for you.
Yeah, I second that. No, congratulations, Austin, the third kid, man, poof, good luck, buddy. Thank you, citizens, for your comments. Thank you for bringing things to our attention. I want to make sure everybody knows that we're always available for any comments or questions via email. We want to make sure they're very receptive to your needs, and so, by all means, please reach out to us if any issues, on issues we have tonight or any issues in the city, we look forward to your communication. Nonetheless, I want to thank everybody for their attendance tonight. Staff and council, thank you for your work, and we will actually move on to an executive session at this point. Okay, city council is now going to retire to a closed session at 7:48 PM pursuant to the Texas Urban Meetings Act, Section 551.087, Economic Development Negotiations, Section 551.2, Real Property, and Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney. A closed meeting to deliberate information on a business prospect that the city seeks to locate in Jersey Village, Ters Number 2, in economic development negotiations, including the possible purchase, exchange, or value of real property related thereto, and Item 2 pursuant to the Texas Urban Meeting Act, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property, and Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney. A closed meeting to deliberate a possible exchange or sell or value of property located at RESD 1 through 5, a block 3, Director's Lot Northwest, Section 1, will return to open session and continue with the remainder of tonight's agenda after the closed session deliberations are concluded. Okay, the closed session was adjourned at 9:32 PM. No official action or vote was conducted during the closed session. We're actually going to reconvene the regular session. Items 1, take appropriate action regarding Jersey Village, Ters Number 2, in economic development negotiations. No action was taken on that item. Item 2, take a discussion, take appropriate action regarding the possible exchange, sell, or value of property located. No action was taken on that item as well. Therefore, we will actually adjourn this evening's meeting. Good night, everybody.